I qualify for old age, I know that.
Luke and Dirk.
Hey.
Luke and Dirk.
Yeah. It hurt, I'll tell you what, it hurts.
You know. Mark Beal.
And I don't think.
Yeah.
In the wrist or?
Oh, Jesus. Go like this and just bend your hand out, and you can do it. I do it on there?
Yeah.
So, I've gotta wait, I've gotta do this, and I've gotta call and get an appointment so I can get a cortisone shot. Just really, really get it taken care of, you know.
Yeah, that's only temporary, they can only do so much of that.
Don't care. Long as, I don't, I'll get there as many times as I can.
Do you ever have trigger finger?
Oh, gosh, yeah, I still got right here.
Do you have surgery?
Two of them, yeah.
Yeah, same for me.
Really, you've had them?
And then, two, two fingers on each hand.
Okay.
Then the doc, a year later, the doc looks at my hands, he's like, oh, you've got Dupuytren's contracture.
What the hell's that?
I feel like I'm on a.
He says, oh, as you get older, your fingers are gonna curl.
Oh, like this one here?
Yeah.
I know. So, music.
She was gonna ask him, but.
Are you, uh?
Kenny, he actually told me the date, I wondered about it, it was hilarious.
Sturman's in Scandinavia, it's.
Is that, look at that, see both hands?
Yeah, it's only gonna get worse.
Yeah, oh, cool.
I was just reading the village board packet.
Better go fishing.
So, I can't throw a bird at anybody for this one? Be curled over?
I mean, the pages are right. It's like he's just like a natural water or?
I'll be damned, really.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, just.
Yeah, I, uh, actually, the last, one of the last couple tunnel surgeries I had, I didn't which hand it was on. He took care of the, uh, trigger finger right away while I was in there.
Oh, did Bolt, let's save that.
Oh, why not? Digging up in here, you might as well go be and dig a little bit and get it done.
Skill that kind of happened.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I couldn't write, but I don't like losing.
Pretty sucky, well, I'm doing pretty good, just got one new part so far.
Sorry. It does.
Just the knee.
Like, I prepared this, he was like, oh. He made all these new people. Last name's John, the neurologist.
Yes. How do you even have to get fifty?
That's what I saw last time.
I had forty-eight, I haven't used it in my life, man.
You did a quarter, please.
Really?
Wow. Yeah, that's not the understatement. Did you get the twenty, did you get the twenty year one? The last time?
I asked him.
Um, let's see, I don't, I think it's just.
Well, they do, they resurface it.
Yeah. The, the five of me is kind of a, a yearly thing.
I didn't, yeah.
And then, I don't know if someone.
The finance thing was kind of surprising.
The county, huh? I don't believe it.
In the last eight hours.
Unless it's that, I don't know who this guy.
Yeah, they make like custom.
I have a good presentation.
Well, are we at ten thousand now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Over, I haven't. Yeah, I'm having something.
Okay. There you go.
Feeling all right? Yeah.
I've had PACL reconstruction.
Right there. On that metal?
On the sap, on the, the other one I had replaced, I had two.
That's what I figured.
And the one that I did, I have done, I have one.
Okay.
And it just, you know, it gets to the point where cartilage just goes.
But it could have been.
I'm waiting here. Tangling.
I would stay here too, huh?
Yeah, I wish I could use that.
Well, at least you get.
How did that happen?
Because this report from Dave, uh.
I've never seen his name, I think he called him, yeah. So, I don't know, maybe he's, he might be for the concession stands.
Oh, well, that's a big thing, yeah. Awful lot of details.
Are your eyes like? It's fine, but we're looking forward to getting you some.
Yes, it's kind of nice.
I'm guessing that's who that is. That's who that is for. The guy Jeff.
Uh, within the next week or two.
For the, uh.
I'm saying I go out here and I'll guess.
Well, it, uh. Oh, Olivia Perry, Harry.
I was, I finally got the governor Nelson's, uh, girlfriend, uh, so then I was coming back home.
We don't have her.
That's right. I heard she was giving them a long time ago, like, a couple weeks ago. Olivia Perry.
Worked in Madison?
Really?
Yeah, here, you got a hundred thousand.
Six thirty.
Hundred grand.
I'm sorry, I have fifteen minutes left, Lisa, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, we're ready?
Yeah, we'll call a meeting to order.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, first item on the agenda is a roll call, please.
Fado?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Mar? Meyer?
Here.
Mulson?
Here.
Hold on?
Here.
Pronounced that right, right?
Yeah.
And Schenelli?
Here. Thank you.
And I'll call the village board to order such as it is tonight.
Here.
Yes.
So, we have Glish and one's present at the moment, so.
So, we, we knew three members we know were, were going to be absent.
Yeah, we have, we have two members over at the fire EMS, and if they get, they'll walk over soon as they get finished.
I don't think it's an, an issue for what's on the agenda tonight, it's just a presentation, so no action or anything like that.
So, you run this or do I run this?
You run, we're, we're your guests.
Okay, okay, so we get on item number five, which is business, um, presentation of two thousand twenty-one housing affordability report. And Martin, I guess you're doing that?
I am, so fortunately, Elise couldn't be here tonight, uh, and of course, she put all the excellent material together, so you're stuck with Jeff and I pretending to know what we're doing. So, uh, the housing affordability report and new housing report is in your packet tonight. Um, so, last summer, the village board, uh, did a little bit of strategic planning and talked about their priorities and objectives over the next year or two. And one of those was affordable housing. And one of the things that came out of that discussion was, uh, a desire to carry forward some of the recommendations that, uh, were in these affordability reports. So, um, Elise and I talked, uh, last fall, that it would be a good opportunity when we have to do the annual update to this report in January, that we could bring the two boards together, the planning commission and village board, to go over a presentation of the annual update and talk about some of the recommendations and, uh, see what next steps are. So, um, a little background on these reports, so back in twenty seventeen, state legislature, uh, approved a law that required communities over, uh, a population of ten thousand to create and publish two reports, a housing affordability report and a new housing fee report. And so, uh, in twenty nineteen, and this was required to be done by twenty twenty, so in twenty nineteen, the village, uh, staff and, uh, our planning consultants, Van De Wall, worked on putting together the first, uh, reports. And then, uh, we've, now we're on our third iteration of it. So, uh, the housing affordability report, this report is required to be updated annually, um, it contains, it's required to contain a variety of information related to the community's progress on implementing the housing element of the comprehensive plan. And then, uh, it's supposed to also provide, um, some data that, uh, is collected, some mapping, and then, uh, some recommendations on how to, uh, improve, um, policies and procedures related to, uh, making affordable, uh, to facilitate affordable housing in the community. So then, there's also a second report, uh, that was required to be created, uh, it's called a new housing fee report. And so, that report just simply contains all the village fees associated with residential construction, so building permit fees, uh, impact fees, utility connection fees, all those sorts of things. And that, that report is not required to be updated every year, it's just required to be updated whenever we have a change in, uh, our fees. Uh, so, uh, Elise actually put together a little presentation, and did you have that?
No. No.
For PowerPoint?
Yeah, where is it?
It's a good question.
Here, I can find it.
It's in the, I think the housing folder.
Admin, planning, I'm assuming. She's watching right now, shaking her head.
Yep, she told us to do.
Affordable housing?
Yeah, it should be under there, I think.
Uh.
PowerPoint.
Is there a PowerPoint? There we go, slideshow.
Yeah.
Hey. We're cooking with gas now. Okay.
Uh, so you wanna go ahead there? So, as I said, uh, the report really contains three components, there's a data component, a discussion of policy recommendations, and then a discussion of process recommendations. So, as far as the data is concerned, let me pull up this on my screen so I can read it. So, for the data, the, what was used was the twenty twenty census, which of course is now, uh, complete and published, the village population is over eleven thousand, um, which is, uh, seventeen point four percent increase from the twenty ten census, so about two thousand people. Uh, vacancy rates in the village, about two percent across all, uh, housing units in the village, um, a nearly zero percent vacancy rate for owner occupied homes, and an industry established standard for this is, um, five percent, so of course, I think we all realize that there's a need for housing and a need for different housing types. Uh, as far as the real estate market in December twenty-one, there were twelve homes and sixty-two vacant residential lots listed for sale. Uh, the average price for a vacant residential lot was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, and the average home price was nearly thirty-nine percent higher from last year, from thirty-fourty-one to four seventy-four. Uh, and then, nearly a quarter of all households are, uh, considered cost burden, which is, uh, paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Uh, so as I said, there, there's some mapping that's done, um, as well, to show undeveloped and redevelopable, redevelopable parcels in the village, residential parcels. Um, and so, this map gets updated every year, um, obviously, you see some of the newer housing subdivisions with Bergmont and Autumn Ridge, the Mary Hill, uh, area, and then some of the random mixed use and multifamily, uh, lots scattered throughout the village. Um, I think the, the Highlands and Netherwood is not, those lots aren't being shown because all of them were actually bought by a builder, uh, recently, so they are not highlighted there. Um, so as far as the recommendations, um, there's really kind of two buckets, uh, of recommendations for policies, um, there's the, the zoning text amendments, which are, um, a little bit easier to do. Um, and those include, uh, updating the definition of family, allowing mixed use development by right in certain districts, reducing the number of uses, requiring conditional use permits, uh, allowing accessory dwelling units or granny flats by right in more districts. So, all things that, uh, would help facilitate the regulatory environment for affordable housing. Um, another suggestion was to continue to use tax increment finance as an incentive to build affordable housing and direct developers to other tax credits. Of course, we've worked with Habitat for Humanity to obtain a community development block grant, we're working with North Point Development on some WEDA tax credits, so, um, we've been pointing developers in those types of directions. Uh, use of planned development zoning to allow density bonuses for affordable housing developments. Um, so this would be if, uh, we allow, uh, flexibilities for, more flexibilities for affordable housing, so for example, maybe we only allow, uh, three-story buildings, but if it's an affordable housing project, maybe we would allow four stories or five stories to allow for more, uh, housing and affordable housing density. And then, the second, uh, kind of bucket of recommended housing policies is more in the realm of the comprehensive plan, uh, so we are due for our ten-year update, uh, starting next year. Uh, so probably about this time next year, we'll be in the thick of that process. Um, and so, some of the recommendations there, uh, to adjust require the mix of housing types for planned neighborhood areas, to require more two-family and multifamily housing, uh, and to set a goal for a certain number or percentage of new housing units to be at various levels of affordability, and then create a housing strategy, uh, within the larger comprehensive plan. So, a number of communities, um, are taking their housing elements a step further by just creating standalone, uh, housing studies that, uh, go in more detail and, uh, more analysis and more study to, to look into that. Um, and then, another thing, uh, that's recommended and will here tonight, um, is to partner with Dane County Housing Initiative in regional, uh, strategy efforts. As far as process improvements, um, update development applications on websites, simplify fee structure, this is actually something that Elise started to work on towards the second half of last year, um, some of our applications are, they need to be updated and modernized, a little bit more user friendly, um, our, our fee structure could be more understandable, um, so those are things that we're already kind of picking away at. Uh, continue to hold regular planning staff meetings with developers to address issues and questions early on, um, we continue to have those every, twice a month, every Wednesday morning, um, they're extremely beneficial, we get everybody that needs to be involved in a development process in the same room, um, hearing the same things, um, and discussing the same things, so they're, they're very helpful, and I think, uh, a lot of developers have been very appreciative of those, those meetings because they get a lot out of them. Uh, consider if certain approvals could be done at the planning commission level only to expedite approval process. So, I think right now, for pretty much all of the village's permits and approvals, they, uh, start here at the planning commission with a recommendation and then go to the village board for approval, I think the only thing that doesn't is site plan approval. Um, but the state law does allow the governing body to delegate some of those powers if they so choose to the planning commission. Um, I worked with the village of Point Net before I came here, and their planning commission was able to approve extraterritorial certified survey maps and in, in-village certified survey maps that did not include a public dedication of land. So, it's typically the very simple certified survey maps where people are just moving property lines or doing a zero-outline duplex, that sort of thing. And then, conditional use permits are also allowed by state law to be approved by the planning commission. So, again, that could be an opportunity to, to help, um, have one less meeting for a developer and one less waiting period. Um, and so, as far as next steps, uh, and this is kind of the reason why we wanted to have both the planning commission and village board here, so everybody was hearing the same things and we're all on the same page. Um, so our plan is we're gonna start working on these recommendations, and so, uh, over the next few months, you'll likely start to see some of these things come before you for discussion and consideration. And the other piece of this was, uh, to, if, if the planning commissioner or village board has any, uh, particular priorities that they want us to, to work on first, um, we're, we'd be happy to hear it. Um, and then, of course, Olivia Perry, I believe, is here, she's going to talk about the, the Dane County, uh, housing strategies. That's all I got. Okay.
Is there anything about the fee schedule that Elise had to present or that, just simply for our information to read on the fees?
Yep, that's just there for your information, yep.
Got it, okay, all right, thank you. Then, Olivia Perry? You're on, man. This is a presentation for Dane County Planning Department regarding Dane County housing strategy.
Do you need a pointer? That red button.
Well, it's nice to be here, thank you so much for the invitation, uh, as, uh, um, Martin said, or sorry, the chair said, um, my name is Olivia Perry, senior planner in the Dane County Planning and Development Department. So, tonight, I'm here to talk about the, um, the Dane County Regional Housing Strategy, uh, taking the next step, and, um, as part of that, uh, what I'll be doing is providing some, um, background, uh, that has led us to this point where we want to take a regional initiative and invite all the communities, um, in Dane County to participate in that effort. Um, but before I do that, provide the background leading up to the initiative and describing the initiative, um, uh, I'm gonna provide a, what I'm calling a workforce housing primer, um, and for the sake of this presentation this evening, I'm using workforce housing to include affordable housing. A lot of people use those terms interchangeably, uh, workforce housing is kind of a good, um, all-around bucket in terms of housing to talk about low to moderate priced, um, housing, because most of the people who need low to moderate income housing, um, are in the workforce or have retired from the workforce, so for the sake of this evening's presentation, I'm just gonna call it workforce housing. Um, so, workforce housing, um, for a renter, it's housing, uh, that costs thirty, uh, housing that costs thirty percent of monthly income, and for a renter, that would be rent and utilities, uh, for homeowner, that would be mortgage, real estate taxes, insurance, and utilities. So, thirty percent of the income whether you're a renter or a homeowner. Uh, how, a household is considered cost burden if they're paying more than thirty percent of their income on, um, on housing, they're considered extremely cost burden if they're, um, paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. Um, this is an example of what you would pay, I'll just show you here, so in the.
It may not reflect on the screen, that's the only thing.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah.
Okay. So, in column, in column number two, the second, forty-nine thousand five hundred, say that's a household of two, making sixty percent of the area median income, um, that would correspond to their, um, that would correspond to eleven hundred and sixty dollars, which they would be able to pay for rent, and these are, um, these are, uh, these numbers are defined by HUD, the area median income is defined by HUD, and WEDA, the Wisconsin Housing and, oh. The Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority defines the, um, income, uh, limits, um, for households, and when we talk about income limits for, um, that, uh, these, these, uh, households are able to pay, that includes rent and utilities. So, again, forty-nine thousand five hundred for a family of two is able to pay eleven hundred and sixty in rent, and that includes, um, utilities as well.
Can I ask you a question, just?
Sure.
So, for clarification, uh, the numbers that you're talking about for income are for fam, number of people, people in the family, so that's if you.
Correct.
If two people, uh, work and earn wages, that's what they should have and.
Commas, yep, right, one is for one person, two is for two person, three, three person, four, four person.
Three and four, that still assumes that the income is full, is from two people usually, or it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter, that's how that, it's just sort of the household income.
Okay.
Right, 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 and then you can see the area median income is, uh, one hundred thousand, one hundred and three thousand one hundred, it's extremely high in Dane County, um, much, much lower than this surrounding counties, but that's the area median income for a family of four. Okay? Yes? Okay, so who needs housing? Employers and employees, that's everyone from small business to large employers, local government, school districts, police and fire, uh, child care and elder care, and there's certainly, uh, a worker shortage in both of those, critical worker shortage in child care and elder care, um, you know, our carpet restor, grocery store, art repair, art parts, retail clothing, big box, hair salons, et cetera. And also, in particular, very much need, um, our construction workers, construction workers can range from anything from roofers, people who lay the carpet, people who paint, tylers, um, truck drivers, um, so these are sort of our critical, the critical infrastructure that we use to kind of experience and, and manage and, and live our daily lives. Oh, I'm sorry. Um. All right, next, okay.
Like being a game show host.
Pardon you?
Like being a game show host.
Yeah, right, um, and then, if we look at it in terms of sort of our residents, we're looking at young families, senior citizens, retirees, uh, disabled, veterans, young adults who are starting their careers. So, the sources and types of workforce housing, um, majority of the new, the, uh, sources, um, for workforce and affordable housing right now are new mixed income housing, and that's housing that, um, combines, um, units that are both market rate and below market rate, that would actually meet some of the needs of the, um, the income level that I showed you in the, the couple screens before. Um, rehab, our existing housing stock, that's older housing stock, that's in, in jeopardy of either being, um, raised and, and redeveloped or, um, is falling into disrepair, single family, multi, that's a really, multifamily, that's a really good source of affordable housing. Dane County Housing Authority Developments, um, they own, uh, they own developments throughout the county, and they also have housing vouchers, um, a voucher can actually give you the opportunity to pay in, in relationship to what, how much money you make if you're qualified for a housing voucher. Habitat for Humanity is actually the only single-family housing developer that, affordable single-family housing developer in the county, um, actually statewide that I know of. There is an attempt to, uh, create single-family housing, um, in some of these other models that you see under alternative, where, um, in co-housing, uh, you sometimes have affordable housing, that's housing that's, um, multiple, uh, units, either attached or separate, have a shared common area, and those housing, that housing, uh, tends to be smaller, um, and it sort of has a different kind of a living or community structure, where there's sort of a required community, um, engagement piece, so people have to participate in making meals and attending meetings and such. Um, accessory dwelling units actually do have the capacity to be, um, affordable housing units, um, and those are typically developed by the homeowner, so that's not, um, Habitat for Humanity, and then, um, well, tiny homes are pretty, uh, you know, are, they're a possibility, but it's, it's much, uh, less likely possibility. And then, co-housing, um, as you may know, that's number of unrelated people living in the same home, um, sharing the same house and sharing, um, common spaces like kitchen and living room and dining room. So, which is more expensive to build, market rate or affordable? They're actually the same, same labor costs, same construction costs, same increase in labor cost, same increase in construction costs. The big difference is that in order to create an affordable or workforce housing development, multifamily housing development, you need a much larger percentage of equity, and, um, that's where it comes in, um, in terms of the time, it takes probably three to four years to make the multifamily development, of workforce housing development come to fruition and, and actually open for, for, um, renters, um, versus the market rate, because the market rate developer can just go to the bank and get the equity, or get the, you know, get the loans that they need, whereas the affordable housing developer has to actually, you know, look at like eight or nine different sources, which could be everything from grant funding to funding, you know, the county has a program, city has a program, I think you believe, I believe that the village of Morgon has a, a, you know, money for, um, developers to, for their development, so it's a much more complicated, much longer process, but there's no difference in the cost. This is just an example of a pocket neighborhood, there's one of these being developed in the city of Madison, and one, one was just developed up north, um, in the Appleton area, I believe. I'm not su, I'm, I'm not sure if they're actually truly affordable, I think the price is actually kind of creep, has been creeping up, so, um, unless maybe it's a nonprofit developer, at this point, pocket neighborhoods, I don't know of a pocket neighborhood that's actually, um, providing affordable housing.
What's a pocket neighborhood?
Um, that's this right here, so a pocket neighborhood is mu, um, multiple units of housing that probably s, are everywhere, everywhere from eight hundred to maybe a thousand square feet, so they're smaller units, smaller, um, homes, and they're kind of put on, uh, like a circle or a horseshoe, kind of creating a, a sort of a self-imposed community, it's sort of like a, a mini subdivision, but the houses are much smaller and closer together, and they typically have rear entrances and rear, rear alleyways. So, regional housing strategy background, um, in twenty fifteen, Dane County created an affordable housing fund, many of you probably are familiar with it, it provides gap financing for multifamily affordable housing developers, typically anywhere from, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand all the way up to one and a half million dollars. That was started in twenty fifteen, at the same time the Dane County Housing Initiative was started, and I'll get into that in just a second. Um, we also have the new Dane County Housing Access and Affordability, um, Division, and that houses CDBG and Home, um, CDBG and Home programs provide some gap financing for multifamily developers, rehab, um, probably fifteen to twenty-five families receive, um, uh, rehab funding, um, for minor and major home repairs through our home program, down payment assistance and weatherization. And from 2015 to 2021, our Affordable Housing Fund was able to help develop seventeen-hundred-and-forty-eight units of workforce housing throughout the county, and I believe that's twelve municipalities in Dane County who took advantage of that where the developments occurred. That housing will be affordable for thirty years, and the total funding that was contributed was twenty-three-point-seven million. So the Dane County Housing Initiative Program I've been running, managing for the last seven years is basically a public-private partnership of residents, elected officials, local government staff, financial institutions, developers, nonprofit housing agencies, and interested stakeholders. And sort of our overall purpose is to develop a network of information, people, and resources to facilitate communication, learning, and help build strategies to expand housing options in Dane County. So how do we do that? For five years, we had an annual housing summit. The last two years were actually sold out. We have a website with lots of information and resources. Since the pandemic started, we've been doing online webinars, educational webinars around workforce housing. We have a great seven-minute educational video. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to see it. It's a wonderful way, introduction to affordable housing and kind of why we're here, why we're in this position. Obviously, we haven't been in this position, you know, for, in the past, and now it's a lot more extreme than it was before. And then we have steering committee meetings, monthly steering committee meetings. Same type of stakeholders are invited to that, and we have, in the past, they probably, most of what they did was plan the housing summits. Now we're doing sort of much more strategic thinking and are kind of shifting into the Regional Housing Strategy effort. And so they're guiding the pre-development of that effort. I provide technical assistance to communities and nonprofit agencies, chosen service organizations and chambers. And then we have loads of fact sheets and research on the website. And many of you are familiar with the Dane County Housing Needs Assessment, with what Professor Kurt Paulson produced to sort of lay the ground for understanding what the housing gap is and how it, in each community, and some of the things that we can actually start to do about it. So when we started in 2015, the Loan Fund and DCHI Initiative, there were three communities working in workforce and affordable housing. Now there are actually thirteen communities working in workforce and affordable housing. So that's a huge and very exciting progress for our Dane County. And this is sort of a list of what the municipalities are doing in terms of housing in Dane County. Many of them have put together a task force or a housing study. And we actually have three at this point, Madison, Middleton, and Fitchburg, who have standing housing committees to facilitate the work of workforce and affordable housing in their communities. The others have put together housing advisory committees and then actually produced a report, and then they're finding other ways to actually implement those recommendations without the task force at this point. So we also have these ongoing challenges. There's lots of great things, as you can see, are happening, lots of expanded interest and effort, but we still have these ongoing challenges, and this is just one statistic out of the Housing Needs Assessment Report. So there are currently fifteen-thousand-four-hundred renters who are paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. There are currently six-thousand-sixty-five homeowners that are paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. And both of these groups are fifty percent or below the area median income. So we have twenty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-five renters and homeowners combined who are at fifty percent of the AMI, who are paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. That's a pretty staggering statistic. And when you look at what the city and the county do are combined in terms of our loan fund every year, 2019, we created five-hundred-and-seventy-eight units together, contributed, you know, and helped make five-hundred-and-seventy-eight affordable housing units in 2019. If you look at the number of units we need just for renters, say, divide that by five-hundred-and-seventy-eight, it's going to take us twenty-six-point-six years to actually close the housing gap for that number of renters. And that doesn't even take into account the number of, the number of households we'll be adding over the next twenty years. We'll be adding another seven thousand, thirty-nine thousand, almost forty thousand new households. Of that, seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-three, approximately twenty percent, will be LMI households. That's a conservative number. Typically, countywide, it's about twenty-three, twenty-four percent, but we're being conservative here. So we have to add another four hundred units, so that'd be four hundred in addition to the five-hundred-and-seventy-eight units. And so nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight units, that's to close the gap in twenty-six years. Number of homeless children, youth, latest numbers from the Department of Public Instruction is eighteen-hundred-and-sixty-five. So obviously, demand far outstrips supply. We underproduced more than eleven thousand housing units relative to growth in Dane County from twenty-six, two thousand and six to twenty-seventeen. This is, this is something I like to share. Around the time that I was born in nineteen sixty-five, it was fifty-six thousand, the median family income was fifty-six thousand, the median home price was one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, one-sixty-two. In 2020, it was sixty-eight thousand seven hundred, median home price was three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand seven hundred. So huge difference. Obviously, home prices are far outstripping income for households. So why a regional housing strategy? Well, from what you can see, there is a lot of interest, a lot of momentum from the regional network of stakeholders. So the interest is in capturing that momentum. I think this is a really good opportunity to really acknowledge what everyone's doing. Everyone, you know, many communities in Dane County are doing something, if not a lot of different things, to address affordable housing. So it's to acknowledge, assess, and build on existing efforts. And come together and create a baseline of shared understanding of existing and future supply and the future supply gap, and then regional trends and looking at latest innovations. And one of the other things is, there are so many different initiatives that are going on right now and programs and information and resources. So I think it's an opportunity to streamline and align what we're doing, avoid duplication, improve communication, and I think evaluate housing from a regional perspective. So the participants in the Regional Housing Strategy will be cities, towns, and villages, each which have specific, you know, with unique and specific needs and opportunity. Residents, nonprofit, elected officials, private sector, small business, large employers, local government staff, and chambers will all be invited to participate. So the approach is, basically, the idea is that we want to have an inclusive and learning, an inclusive learning process where all communities and stakeholders are welcome, no matter what their size, knowledge, or background. The Regional Housing Strategy recognizes each community is different in size and wants to maintain its own unique character. Each has a different level of capacity. Regional Housing Strategy is not like presenting a race or offering a race, it's really a conversation, a meaningful dialogue, discussion, and exploration about opportunities that we can work on together and ways we can collaborate. It will specifically not duplicate, replace, or interfere with local housing efforts, but seeks to build on and leverage those efforts where possible. So the Regional Housing Strategy Advisory Team is going to be leading this, overseeing the Regional Housing Strategy. It's going to include mayors, village presidents, or the representatives, plan commission, banks, employers, chambers, regional stakeholders like Mad Rep and Urban League, developers, school districts, and other key local and regional stakeholders. Dane County's role is community outreach to tell you about it, to let you know about it, identify funding, you know, hire support staff, and the planning consultant, manage the contracts, coordinate logistics, website, and communications. So the focus will be for residents, workforce, that are sixty percent AMI and below, and up to eighty percent. We'll also look at the most vulnerable in our, in the county, thirty percent AMI and below, and then we'll look at the missing middle, eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI. And the components, approximately eight components. We've decided that we want to hire an expert facilitator because this is a very, it's a very big effort. There'll be, you know, a lot of different communities that are coming and participating, a lot of different stakeholders, people from the private and public sector, towns to cities and villages. So we want to have an expert facilitator that will be able to help us really define, engage, create, and structure some, you know, ways that we can have meaningful dialogue around some difficult issues, some big challenges, and help us identify priorities, recommendations. Introduction will obviously lay the ground, look at regional trends around housing, workforce, economic development. The housing study will be a little bit like the Housing Needs Assessment, but it'll be much more detailed. We're actually going to also be using a racial and gender equity lens in terms of housing. So we're going to look at housing and how it affects, you know, how the different, how it's different for, if it's different, for people of color and women, and also senior citizens. And then one of the main things we're going to be doing is inventorying all the programs and everything that all of you are doing on a municipal level, and evaluating those, and identifying gaps in programming, resources, information, and communication. So to build on, you know, the work that you're doing, and also look at innovations. We're going to develop a vision for housing for the next ten to twenty years. And then the Regional Housing Strategy Advisory Committee will develop recommendations, and they'll produce a housing guide as a result that will guide housing for the next ten to twenty years in Dane County. So possible outcomes. An interest and willingness to learn together across municipalities, agencies, organizations, breaking down silos between different municipalities, cities, villages, and towns. A baseline of data and information all municipalities and stakeholders can use and share. Greater understanding of the regional nature of housing, our shared assets, challenges, and opportunities. A comprehensive toolkit of best practices, resources, alternative housing models, municipal-level tools, evaluation and measure, measure progress. One of the things that I think is most interesting, from the county's perspective, my perspective, is, is there a way that we can actually measure all of the efforts that everyone is undertaking? So each community is, you know, leaning in to some degree, developing, you know, or preserving affordable and workforce housing. But at this point, we don't measure our progress, and we don't also measure sort of what we might be losing on the other end. Houses are lost every year, homes are blighted, multifamily aging stock is demolished and redeveloped to market rate. So we don't really have a way to measure our progress. So one of the things that I think would be a really exciting outcome is sort of seeing if we can come together, agree that measuring, you know, our progress over time would be a good way to help inform policies and programs that we develop. New partnerships, collaborations to increase alignment, efficiency, and communication, and expand housing-wide programs and resources. Strategies we might identify and work towards together could be, could be, new funding and investment priorities to help equalize opportunities for Dane County residents of color, and to expand housing preservation for single-family and multifamily, perhaps with energy efficiency upgrades. New housing opportunities for towns identified, such as accessory dwelling, dwelling units, or new farmworker housing. New communication or education strategies for residents. That seems to be an ongoing theme. Communities are always telling me that residents are reluctant to support multifamily or affordable workforce housing development. So maybe there's an opportunity for, to have a county-wide strategy for communication and education for residents. And then an increased knowledge of the impacts and connection between housing, the environment, and climate change. That has been a theme from the communities that I've spoken to. They're really interested in how they can actually use housing, which has such a huge impact on land use. Is there a way that they can do that, that, you know, reduces our impact on climate change? And then maybe a mutual goal to increase overall percent of affordable housing in Dane County by ten percent over a certain period of time, for example. So partner opportunities. So this is a formal invitation for the village of Oregon to participate in the Regional Housing Strategy and to be, participate in the Regional Housing Strategy Advisory Team. We're inviting up to two people from each municipality. That could be your senior elected official, your village president, or your representative, or a plan commission member, or a community leader that you saw fit to participate. And then community partner sponsors. Some communities are actually making a financial contribution, but most, for the most part, our community partner sponsors have been from the private sector at this point. But you're also invited to become a community partner sponsor. This is the timeline at this point. Since last April, I've been doing stakeholder outreach, working on a budget, drafting RFP. We have, the RFP is out, deadline is due March sixteenth, so we'll be hiring a consultant in March. We will be kicking off the Regional Housing Strategy in May, hopefully the end of May. But there's still some more stuff to, more work to do. I'll be hiring also support staff for myself to support the group. It'll probably be a, the Regional Housing Strategy Advisory Team will probably be about sixty people, and we'll be meeting at the Alliance Energy Center and, yeah. So at this point, these are the community partner sponsors that have signed on or provide sponsorship. On the right are the sponsors, and on the left are the community partners that have signed on and said they're interested and want to participate. And each of these meetings represents, typically, I meet with the county, the village staff or the city staff first, and then come to the plan commissioner, the village board, or the city council, and then, and then there are discussions afterwards. But we're not, I'm not going to be sending you a formal document that says, would you like, you know, would you like to participate? I will be sending you a formal invitation. It will go out in April to participate, but there isn't sort of a sign on the dotted line, you know, agreement that we have. At the end of the process, I think, you know, we'll all, we'll all be hopefully willing to put our names and a stamp of approval on the Regional Housing Guide that gets developed by you, by people, you know, by the leaders, the advisory team. But, so this is a formal invitation for you to join this effort, and we'd be most grateful if you were interested and willing to support it. So at this point, if there are any questions, thank you so much for the opportunity again. Any questions or comments you have, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question for you. So to kind of cliff note this a little bit, if I could?
Yeah.
So what you're doing right now, or intending to do or hoping to do, is sort of gather information and data across the county for housing and incomes and what's available, what's not, and then distill that further with gender, and age, and sex, and everything else.
Right, 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 yeah. That's the housing study portion of this.
And then take that information back to the individual communities in Dane County and say, this is the information that you can use to sort of help with your housing and zoning?
I'm sorry, I think I left out a very critical component. So the process will begin in May, at the end of May, and you will be invited to participate in eight to ten meetings together as a region. So there'll be sixty or seventy of you who will come together and meet at the Alliance Energy Center once a month for eight to ten meetings. There'll be a consultant leading the effort. They'll be bringing forward housing study, information around a housing study. They'll be bringing forward an evaluation and assessment of all the programs, initiatives, you know, financial loan opportunities that the county is, has engaged in, or municipalities have. We're going to evaluate that, we're going to look at that together, see, you know, who's doing what, see what's not being done, and identify things that could be done, that are being done maybe elsewhere. So, you know, kind of getting a best practices program assessment. And then, yeah, and then, you know, based on that information, the Housing Needs Assessment, the program evaluation, Regional Housing Committee members will be invited to brainstorm about recommendations around what gaps they might see, things they want to prioritize, ways we can potentially work together or streamline efforts based on, you know, the gap that we've seen, program evaluation that we've done, and develop a vision for housing for the next ten to twenty years in Dane County, and then put those, put recommendations forward.
Okay. So I don't sit on the village board, I sit on the plan commission.
Okay.
As a plan commission member, how do I utilize that information that you have distilled down and given to us? Does that make sense?
Yes. So there will be a guide that will come out that you or, you know, that people who might, you know, say several of you, say you and Patrick are willing to participate, or you and Greg are going to participate on the Regional Advisory Committee. The guide will have recommendations that we would like, that you would like the county to pursue as a region. And those will be, you will be included in that. And so whatever those recommendations or outcomes that I shared with you, you know, say, say the region said, we want to, we want to expand housing, you know, we want to increase housing ten percent in the next five years. So what can we do as municipalities to do that? Maybe that's something you want to, you know, you want to join in the pursuit of that. Say we decide to create and expand investment opportunities for down payment assistance for people of color. Or we say that that's a priority. Or we say that that's a priority recommendation for the region. So now you know that the region has said, this is one of the priorities we want to do. We want to expand or equalize opportunities for people of color. So if there's funding at a local level, you could do that. Or you could support that recommendation at a countywide level. You know, the county has a, you know, several funds that we use. Maybe, so you've decided as a region, you think that's a priority. So these, so you're, so there are a wide variety of things that actually, outcomes could happen. And, and I think that each community is going to be able to, depending on their size, their capacity, and, you know, a lot of it, you know, depends on, you know, their land uses. Some communities are landlocked, some have a lot, a lot more land than others. Some have different needs than others. So you will be able to, you know, pursue the recommendations that you, that you create that in the best way that, you know, your community sees it. You're not going to be told that you have to, yeah, right.
Yeah, I could foresee like an outcome of this initiative being that making this change to your zoning code or your subdivision ordinance, we've seen has had a positive impact on encouraging affordable housing.
Right.
And that could be something that the plan commission generates and then recommends to the village board based on what came out of that study.
And a lot of communities still haven't, you know, extended the life of their TIF to capture the affordable housing increment. So that might be a recommendation. Yeah, updating, you know, we have there a number of communities in the county that have caps on their multifamily development. So maybe there would be suggestion to increase the cap or eliminate the cap on multifamily development. But I think a lot of it too, really, just as just one example, I met a young woman at UW Health who's a program evaluator for a research project, and she told me she was looking for a home. And I said, oh, that's so exciting, is this her first home? Yeah, she said, it's her first home. And I said, so do you have, are you working with a real estate agent? I said, great, great, great. And have you found a bank? And she said, yes. She said, but for some reason, I'm not, I'm not going to be able to qualify for, for a loan, a 30-year fixed rate loan. And I said, well, why is that? And she said, well, that's what my real estate agent told me. And I said, well, that's interesting, because that's pretty much the standard mortgage product. And she'd never known, she didn't know anything about, you know, getting a mortgage, she's a first-time homebuyer. And I said, well, that's not true, and I can give you a list of banks that you can actually get that from. And I said, do you know anything about down payment assistance? And she said, well, what's that? And I said, well, for first-time homebuyers, there's a $7,500 down payment assistance program the state has. And if you attend a class, you can actually get another 1,500 or 2,000. And she didn't know anything about that. And so we actually have real estate agents who are working less scrupulously than we would like. And we also have young people who are trying to get into homes that don't know about another $10,000 they could use to defer down payment in the, you know, and get them into a home that they might not be able to afford. So this is one small, tiny bit of information that if people, we all sat around a table and knew this together as a county and said, well, what should we do about that? You know, what could we possibly do about that? Maybe we could improve our communication. And I think there are lots of things like that where one community is doing a bunch of things that the other community doesn't know about. I mean, I could tell you 10 different things that are going on in different communities around the county that you'd probably be interested in, that might work in the Village of Oregon, but you don't know about them. And I'm only one person. So there's just a lot of communication opportunities. And I think ways that we can, we can have conversations probably more effectively and, yeah, and expanded, yeah.
I believe I heard you say tiny homes are much less likely a possibility as a solution to this crisis. Can you explain why that is?
I just think on the list of opportunities for communities to pursue, my experience and what I've heard is that they're just a much harder sell to residents. And there isn't the local leadership that I'm seeing in the municipalities that I'm talking to. I think, I think they are a viable model, but I'm just not seeing that in terms of if we could do any of these things like the multifamily, you know, the Habitat for Humanity, we could partner with the Dane County Housing Authority, if we could, you know, accessory dwelling units. Tiny homes, just, I'm not seeing that, you know, in my experience with communities. I'm not seeing it, yeah.
Is that a lack of desirability? Or is it regulations that are causing that?
Oh, I'm sure regulations are, you know, a big part of it. I don't know actually how you would zone for.
Well, it.
A, I mean certainly, you know.
It obviously comes down to a lot, obviously the lot size.
Yeah.
And everything, but, or you could put them into a condo-type development where they would have a lot of common area and that type of stuff, but.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's been done.
I don't know.
It's just not done here yet.
I don't know any communities that are doing that. I feel like Stoughton tried to do that a few years ago, and I don't know if they were successful at it. You could consider like a mini subdivision. A lot of the tiny homes you see are actually on trailers. So is it a, is it sort of going to be kind of a quasi-trailer park slash tiny home village? Or is it going to be more like a subdivision where you actually have, you know, each, each tiny home has a carport? I don't know, I mean, and I think this.
Or could it be treated as an ADU? So, you know, as a, potentially, so not a community.
Right.
But a way to add housing to, you know, a single-family residence.
Yeah. Right, that's a really, I've never even thought about that. You know, like you pull up the tiny home and park it in your, or put it in the backyard of your single-family home. Would that be, I mean, I, how, yeah, right? That's a question for.
Again, it'd be like making, having a concerted decision by the plant commission and board to go in that direction and then modifying our zoning ordinance to be able to allow those type of uses. And I think that was one of the things in the Affordable Housing Report was saying, you know, how we can tailor our zoning code to better reflect some of these higher densities, accessory dwelling units, and that type of thing. We've been encouraging our developers that especially like looking at the lease parcel and everything up there, that we would, as staff, be very supportive of a much higher density. And we're pushed that way by CARPSY. CARPSY is really pushing towards a much higher density.
Right.
When, when we see subdivisions get annexed.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You don't get really jerked, you don't really.
Well, yeah, we do now. They came. They snuck in.
They got a quorum.
All right. So if we can, we can take a motion to the, for the village board to adjourn?
Just to make that motion.
All right, Luke and Derek. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thanks, guys. Okay, we'll move on with the plan commission meeting. Approval of minutes of January 6, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
Don't move, move on. Second, Dino.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to public appearances. This item again is for anybody that, anybody in the audience or the public that comes in. This allows the members of public to provide information to plan commission, including items on and off the agenda. Is anybody here to talk about any of those? None, thank you very much. Move on to communication, miscellaneous business. We have none, unfinished business, none. New business. Site plan application for the concession stand, J.C. Park, West Park, submitted by the Village of Oregon.
I can start that, and we can have Nick come up and ask questions if necessary, but, or answer questions if necessary. But there's a report that Elise, Elise has prepared for us. Let me just get to the overall site plan here of the park. You can see, as you are well aware, we did site plan approval, I think it was last meeting or the meeting before, for what we're calling J.C. Park West until it's either sponsored or renamed differently. That included all of, all of the amenities here. But what we're talking about tonight is this just number seven. I think it's number seven, if my eyeballs are right. Right in the center, it is a center of a quadplex.
Right.
Of the Ball Diamonds in a large concrete mezzanine area. I want to say this is, first off, from the get-go is when we started conceptually looking at this, we started working with a, someone who works for Dan Burtler and Supreme Structures, this is before we had hired any kind of individuals. This gentleman does a great job, and he kind of came up with a really neat concept that kind of embraced a little bit of the, bit of Oregon, the kind of wanting to do something a little unique, but still maintain a very kind of straightforward, simple structure. And I think I can go down here to a few pages. To the, just the architectural renderings is really where we want to be. Very nice building, so it, the idea behind it is really to kind of embrace a little bit of what was, become more and more of a landmark in our village is the Tin Man. Randy, I don't know if you've heard about this, but the Tin Man is kind of a.
Tin what?
Yes, exactly. No, but the Tin Man Water Tower obviously has kind of become a focal point. And so one of the ideas is trying to kind of bring some of the elements in a small way, but in kind of a very unique way to, to a building. And this is, the elevation of it, it's a two-story building, it's a CMU block first floor, followed with secondary wood, wood frame construction, and kind of a unique metal roof. And the second floor is for the scoring, scoring, and there's also a room up there that we've designated as an umpire room. Nowadays, it's kind of nice that they have a spot where they can get away from parents. I hate to say that, but.
Yes.
First floor is restrooms, men's, women's, and family, to accommodate all individuals. And then a really nice sized concession room, or concession area, both in and out with concession windows. And then mechanical room, and then we've also have room in there, we have a conduit stubbed and everything for the future lighting systems for the Ball Diamonds and everything else. So Nick, what else will we cover in this? Materials? Do you want to talk about materials?
Sure.
So I, hats off to Sketchworks Architecture, has been the architect on this that we retained. They've taken the initial concept prepared by Blake with Supreme Structures and taken it and really developed a very functional, very nice, I think it'll be a, it'll be a very unique but, but attractive building that really, that really helps complement the park. The colors, obviously, one of the neat things is we are having a local metalworks artist will be doing treatments on the outside four columns that are going to be, that look exactly like the legs of the tower on our, on our towers. Kind of that metal lattice with the channel on the one side. So it's kind of, and then, kind of like we have up there now, a weather vane with a rotating arrow for weather direction, for wind direction. You want to talk about the materials a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, so that first floor you're looking at is like a burnished CMU block, so it's highly durable, cleanable for that concessions area. The orange on that floor is showing kind of some of that structure in the, in the Oregon kind of school colors of that. So that's kind of brought throughout the project, throughout the, the kind of overhang on the second floor too, and touches in spots. There's a standing seam roof on the upper floors. That large canopy with the shingle roof provides a nice overhang for when people are grabbing drinks or food at the concessions area, or if people are gathering and it's raining, there's enough area where, you know, a large group gather underneath.
I think it's like a six or an eight foot overhang.
Yeah, it wraps all the way around all the, all four sides. And then we've got corrugated metal siding, kind of running up to mimic that, the look of the water tower and the, and the roof cap kind of condition. I don't know if you want to show the floor plan?
Yeah.
Jeff, we can, we can at least see what's in there. A little bit down. Sorry, other way.
Other way?
Yeah. It was maybe a four or five pages of right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what you're looking at is two bathrooms on the upper portion with just an overhead door to access. So it'll be wide open for people to kind of use during occupied hours. Multiple sinks, you know, highly durable, cleanable materials in there, epoxy floors. What else? You have the family restroom on the left side, and then some internal storage and mechanical rooms, and then the stairs leading up to that scorer's box and area on the second floor. And then the large concession area is kind of the feature of that, two windows and some areas for countertops, sinks, and refrigerators to kind of support that use, so.
You can see the outline of the roof compared to where, you know, the windows are and that type of stuff. So it really does provide a really nice, large area under canopy.
Well, you can see it also on the drawing A102, I think, can't you?
This is the upstairs, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So yeah, so you can see kind of how far that canopy extends below. And then for the upstairs portion, we've got kind of a ring arrangement for the four scorer's tables, and then an umpire room that can have a changing area and whatnot in there.
So this is coming for you tonight for site plan approval. You can see Elise has a very nice concise report here on this. This does meet all of the zoning requirements, bulk zoning requirements, landscaping is taken care of by the design by Rettler. The sidewalk, it's all concrete mezzanine around, and the parking already meets all of that. So staff recommendation is approval of the site plan. These drawings are ready, we're just talking about bidding schedule. Hopefully advertised next week, and so we'll get it in tomorrow, Candy.
Very, very complete, very complete set.
Yeah, they've done a very nice job of preparing this, a very complete setup, gone through it a couple times. And we're excited about it.
It's a nice looking, nice looking building.
Yeah.
It really is. So, anybody have any questions before we go on to approval of the, approval or disapproval?
So I, too, second that it is a nice, comprehensive presentation. The only thing I didn't get from is, is exterior lighting. Can you tell me what's planned for that?
Great question.
Yeah. If you want to go back to that.
Bring me down in the E's arm.
The E's drawings, yeah.
Yeah.
M. O, N, P.
E10 has the interior and E11 has interior, but you didn't have anything on the exterior.
We have, well, we have exterior, sorry, sorry. We have lighting, a lot of lighting under the canopy.
Oh.
Trying to remember where that was.
It is also shown on our roof plan too, Jeff.
Oh, yeah. A103?
Yeah, there's some, some lighting that kind of shoots back towards the building, kind of at the four corners, kind of shooting up towards those signage spots.
Right.
So that can light that up at night.
I thought we had lighting under the canopy too.
You do.
Yes.
On sheet A103?
Oh.
There's can lights underneath all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, the hope is that, and if you're out there watching on news or on the OCA media tonight, the hope is that we have a sponsor that will take on the, there's all the can lights, that will take on the sponsor of the park. We no longer have a J.C. group in town, but it's just known as J.C., but for now it'll be kind of unnamed. We'll have to.
Give them cross it.
So Row Park is still up for grabs. But that seems to be very low on everyone's recommendation list. But, yeah, so that these lights here.
Yep.
And here, that would shine up, up onto that and to kind of help illuminate it like we, like we've done with the water tower.
Excellent. Anybody else?
The only thing, one thing I want to ask is, is it irony that on a village project, that the village planner, only thing that she says is approval of the site plan? There's no comments?
On our own project?
Yeah.
We've been so critical of them to this date that they have not, that they don't.
It's that good.
It's that good.
Awful lot of drawings.
It's a good project.
Yeah, it is, it's, uh, well, and we, obviously, I've, you know, since it's our project, we've been working with them quite a few iterations on this and everything, but.
Okay, how about a motion recommending approval of the site plan is presented for the, uh, the new park, West concession stand.
Still move, Bino.
Have a second?
A second.
That was by you, Eric, by Mr. Smithback. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, nicely done.
Thank you. We hope to start construction this summer. It'll, we'll see initial construction start with grading and they'll get the pad ready so that the park can be built, but then that'll get the contractor then come in about five weeks after master site grading has started and we'll start to see this go up.
John, do you have that much detail on your drawings?
I think there was another agenda item, Greg.
Okay. I'm just curious how much you. I have a comment, I just can't help myself, but I'm, I'm gonna let it go, I'll let it go. I really want to say something, but I won't. Okay, moving on. Status of development projects, next meeting, staff report, I'm sorry, direct replying administration report. And she's not here. Status of development projects, um, next meeting is going to be on March third. Planning staff, uh, agendas, want to talk about that stuff that's on the agendas for January and for, uh, up for those? Nothing? Future meetings, driveway setbacks, annexation process, chickens and bees, okay. Well.
Concealed passengers.
Boy, that's a hodgepodge.
The only thing I don't have there is digital menu ordering system.
I'm curious, what about, what's the driveway setbacks, what's that again?
So that's, that's a common problem we have in the village. Uh, our setback to the driveway on the side yard setback is five feet and a lot of homes with only ten foot wide, uh, setbacks, they want to put like a side patio or side RV storage.
Like I have in my. Only I have a lot of room in mine.
Your non-conforming, your existing non-conforming use, is that what you're talking about? Yes.
Mine's been conforming.
And so a lot of, a lot of communities have actually smaller setbacks than that. We've talked about taking it down to two feet or five feet, or two feet or three feet.
So, okay, so you have a.
Property line, two feet.
Two feet.
And then concrete.
Then concrete, okay, because you got a ten foot side yard, that's a minimum.
Right, that gives someone with a ten foot, at least give them an eight foot wide, which usually is enough to park a.
Right.
Kid car or it's not going to park your pontoon boat or your monster camper, but it'll, it helps up. It actually would help out a lot of people.
Try hard enough and believe in yourself, you can do it, Jeff.
All right, anything else we got to talk about? The motion to adjourn, please.
Don't move, move on.
Have a second?
Second, Bino.
Bino, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you everyone, appreciate it.